Good afternoon and welcome to the October 21st, 2021 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. I'm Greg Musler, the Chairman of the Board. Would you please help me open the meeting as we always do with our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have four trustees present, which gives us a quorum. Trustee Cook is out of town with limited or no Internet service, so will not be joining us by Zoom. Trustee Smith Everett has job responsibilities related to her work with the Shawnee Mission School District and will be here later in the evening. And with respect to trustee Angelina Lawson, she informed Dr. Bound and me this afternoon that she will be resigning from the Board effective October 31st and will not be participating in the meeting tonight and asked that I read her resignation correspondence. So I will do that now. Mr. Chairman and Mr. President, today I notify the Board of Trustees of my intent to resign on October 31, 2021. At the beginning of the year, I informed the Board that I could not seek reelection, knowing that I would find that career opportunities would put me at what I believe to be a moral and ethical conflict with serving as an elected official. At the time, I believed I would not be looking toward that work actively until early 2022, but as 2021 comes to a close, I have been asked to start accepting roles, which will start earlier than expected. I am honored to have served on the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees and honored to have been a part of the process to choose the next president of our college, respectfully Angelina Lawson. As we've done in the past, I would ask for a motion and a second and a vote on accepting the resignation that I just presented.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved by trustee Schneider and seconded by trustee Ingram to accept trustee Lawson's resignation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion carries four to zero. Trustee Lawson served with passion and enthusiasm for three years and 10 months, I guess, from when she started and will miss the last two meetings of her term. From there, we will go on to awards and recognition, the student spotlight today. Dr. Bound.
Well, as always, it's a pleasure for me to introduce one of our students. And tonight, I believe you hear from three, but specifically, our student spotlight tonight is Tanner Brown. I've come to know Tanner through conversation we've had. He is a faithful servant, serving in the Air National Guard. And so we thought it would be appropriate in the month ahead, as we celebrate Veterans' Day, that it would be good to hear from a student who is serving our country with pride. And I won't tell you much of his story, but he is, he works in our and serves in our Veteran and Military Student Resource Center here on campus. And he and his wife relocated here to follow her career. And it was a pleasure to spend time with Tanner and I hope you'll get a chance. I look forward to the conversation we'll have tonight. So with that, Tanner.
Awesome. Thank you, Ben. Yeah, so he kind of took a little bit of my thunder, but it's okay. Yeah, it's all right. So yeah, I'm originally from Wichita, Kansas, a little town just east of it called Augusta, Kansas, where I grew up. Spent majority of my life there. I did grow up pretty much, you know, a single child. I do have a brother and sister, but they're 12 and 14 years older than I am. So they're pretty much out of the house while I was growing up. Raised by a single mother, we moved quite a bit. Lived in Oklahoma, Arkansas, Missouri, you know, just falling job to job and then ended up coming back to Augusta. That's really where my family's from. And then went through, graduated high school there, ended up actually going to college. Spent a year and a half in college, actually withdrew my second semester just because college and I didn't get along. And then really, now that I'm old, I realize I just didn't put enough effort into college to really succeed. So I started, went to the workforce, realized pretty quickly that my skill set and my knowledge really wasn't up to par with what I wanted to do. So I started looking at my other alternative opportunities at that point. And my best friend at the time actually enlisted in the Kansas Air National Guard. But I was actually looking at going full-time, going Air Force or Marines, which I know are two drastically different, different branches of service. But in high school, I did take my ASVAB. I scored pretty well on my ASVAB. It seemed like every week I had the Navy calling me, asking me to join, asking me to join. And so that kind of ruled out the Navy right there. And then my brother was Army, so I was like, I can't be, you know, I can't be Army. I gotta do something different. So I was like, I scored high enough on my ASVAB, decided to go talk to the active-duty recruiter. Loved what they told me. And I'm, I'm a firm believer that things happen for a reason. And as I was on my way to go sign my papers, to pretty much sign the next four years of my life away for active duty, my best friend from high school and everything called me while he was in tech school in Biloxi, Mississippi and said, have you talked to a guard recruiter? I told him, no, you know, I don't, I kind of want to, you know, have something set in stone my next four years. But then I took it as, you know, maybe that's a sign. Went and talked to guard recruiter, loved even more what he was telling me, signed, signed right then and there, and it's been the best decision of my life. Went to tech school, did all that, went to, became an emergency manager, did emergency management on the base for roughly about two and a half years and led me into what I thought was going to be my final career path. I got a job as the Deputy Director of Emergency Management for Butler County right before the pandemic happened. Also, right before the pandemic happened, I ended up deploying. I went to Al-Sad, Iraq. During that time, you know, that was, that was a wake-up call between getting rockets, missiles, you know, taking small arms fire, stuff like that. Kind of opened my eyes up because I would say I feed off my own ego pretty well, but that really showed that, you know, I'm not, I'm not a knight in shining armor. My, my armor can be busted. So went through all that, came back, and then it was pandemic central at that point. So did all that pandemic. During this time, my wife, she was a school counselor. And then like, like Dr. Bound said, that we ended up relocating. She had the opportunity to start her own private practice in mental health counseling here in Overland Park. My, my whole thing was I was just going to go back into the workforce and find a job and work and school was not even on my mind at this time. But I looked at doing the transfer of my, my benefits over to her so she could continue her education for certificates and stuff like that for different types of counseling. And during that time, I was like, well, you know what? Maybe I can looking to go into school. And she was down for that idea. And I know some of us that are married kind of know what the wife says, kind of has to go sometimes. So, so I decided to look at school and ended up, applied and got in. And I was going to go for nursing, but come to find out, I don't know if that's 100% my strong suit. Suddenly to something that I'm more familiar with in the fire science. So I'm recently just transferring into fire science. But yeah, I'm new, new to Johnson County and this is my first semester here at the college and living here. I actually love it. Coming from a small town, I didn't necessarily think I was going to like it as much as I do, but I kind of realized I'm kind of reclusive and I don't really go more than two miles away from my house because I got everything I need within those two miles. So it makes it nice and easy for me. But yeah, and I work up in the veteran service, which has been, which has been amazing. It's really, I kind of like being a people person, talking to people. So it's been nice to help people out, especially with veterans like me that, that need help and especially looking to continue their education. So that's only half, that's me pretty much in a nutshell, so.
Tanner, thanks, thanks for coming today and visiting with us. We're going to hear a little bit later in what we call the Collegial Steering Committee report that I'll give, that there are a number of us on that committee who would find Augusta to be a big city.
Yeah, true. It's small for, compared to this, but yeah, there's a lot, a lot of cities in Kansas that are actually really small and I.
So you're still in the Guard?
I am, yep.
And what's that obligation?
So I've, I've done my first obligation, which is six years. And I signed my another six. I've been in for almost eight years. Come early next year, it'll be eight years that I've served. And right now, we, we actually changed it, which I'm really glad we changed. I work in the Civil Engineering Squadron. So it used to be one weekend a month, two weeks out of the year. Normally our two weeks out of the year were in the summer. And what's made it nice is I've been to Germany, been to Hawaii three times. So we get to go on these really nice, you know, deployments for training. We're not, we're not going on a vacation, but it's, it's been nice to go places that when you have a day or two off that you can actually, you know, go and explore. But right now, it's one month, we do a four-day drill. The next month, we do a two-day drill. And then the next month, we have off. That way we can equal our same amount of drills. And it's been nice, especially like I said, working in civil engineering, that one day we pretty much is all catching up on computer-based training or stuff like that. And now we can actually get equipment out, do a little exercise and put equipment away with, with the next three days instead of trying to rush it and barely getting a lot of training in, so.
Trustee Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's Tanner?
Yes.
Which branch of the Guard, sorry, I missed that.
The Air National Guard.
Kansas Air National?
Yes, yep. I'm down at McConnell.
I had two brothers that were Marines, counting, they were with the Air Guard at Diego Garcia's supporting the Iraq War. They had five tours total.
Oh, wow.
One of my brothers was Lieutenant Commander, Austin, first.
That's amazing.
And so I just wanted to commend you and say, let us know if you ever need anything. We sure hope we're, Dr. Bound's getting the resources you need. Sounds like he is. And it's kind of callous to follow, but thank you for your service.
Appreciate it.
People like you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's always been weird when people like thank me for my services. You know, I kind of was selfish and did it for myself. So it's always weird to like get that, get that back. And I'm like, I don't know how do I respond to this, so.
No, Tanner, any, anytime you are thanked, I think that's a sincere thank you for your service, no matter what that includes. So thank you very much for your commitment.
Thank you so much.
I think the one thing that I would ask is, or invite you as well, typically Laura Smith Everett, one of our trustees is here and does a good job of questioning our students who come forward. But one of the things she does say is that, you know, we're always here, we're open to listening if you have any thoughts or suggestions or whatever. You know, please feel free to contact someone and, and let us know what your thoughts are because I'm sure your observations are truly appreciated by those you're working with. So thank you for being here this evening and sharing your time.
Appreciate it. My pleasure.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Let us know if we can do something.
Will do.
Thanks, Tanner. Ready for open forum? Yes. The next item on the agenda is our open forum. The open forum is a period at the start of each regularly scheduled Board of Trustee meeting where citizens can comment on items related to the college. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes unless there are a number of speakers, in which case the chair may limit it further than that. In order to be recognized, a speaker must register for Zoom comments or virtual comments by five o'clock the day before the meeting. It's a Wednesday. And if they want to speak in person, it's 4:45 on the day of the meeting. When addressing the Board, registered speakers are expected to remain at the podium, be respectful, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. We have no signed up speakers for today's open forum period. One thing I did, I neglected to mention in, as we talked about trustee Lawson's resignation is that we have a process under our policies and under state law to fill vacant positions. But because of the election being on November 2nd and a new board being seated in January and trustee Lawson's seat being an open seat, we will simply, we will not, we will not implement the, the process because we wouldn't get it done fairly to potential applicants until the January meeting anyway. So our seventh trustee will be sworn in at the January meeting. Board reports, Student Senate Report, Shelby? Welcome.
Hello. Glad to be back, very honored to be here. I just wanted to give an update on what Student Senate was doing. So right now, we're working on our Trick or Treat for Kids event, which will be happening next Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 in the Comms Building. It's very much a community-based event and so invite like anyone with little kids because it's for them and we're very excited to put it on. Another event that we're working on is JCC gives and nominations are open now until November 1st. This is an annual event connecting donors with those who need donations during the holiday season. So those will, that will be in the works next. And then we had some funding requests from different clubs that we've approved. So Luna, Latinos United Now and Always, we've approved their Dia de los Muertos, Women in Leadership Night and their Fiesta. So just a whole slew of, slew of events. And then Bollywood Boulevard put on their Garba en Dia night. And that, that was a successful event that happened. And then GSA is working to put on a Rocky Horror Picture Show showing for Halloween. So they're very excited because they haven't had any in-person events, you know, due to COVID last year. So that's happening. And then as of last Tuesday, we just approved Model UN's budget request for their trip. And then we've also approved a new social club. So I've met the club president, he's super nice and yeah, we're just excited to have a new club on the campus. And then we have continued representation in Ed Affairs, College Council, COPS, CASI, Student Sustainability Committee and DDI. So I'm very pleased with that. Do you have any questions?
Would you give me the date, give us the date and time again for the Halloween?
Yeah, Trick or Treat for Kids will be happening October 28th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM and call 155.
And I'm going to ask Terry to, if you would give the Board a reminder before the Board meeting in November about JCC gives so that people like me can remember maybe to bring a donation? We try to get the Board involved and usually forget about it until late, so. Lee?
Yeah, I can't remember the last time we heard, Mr. Chair, a budget item was approved for the UN, Model UN Club. Did I have that right?
Yeah.
Have you ever heard that, Dr. Bound?
I don't recall that from last year.
Such a staple of so many meetings, you know, just to hear about Model UN and to hear that, it's some return to normalcy. I just, thank you for being here. I don't mean to ramble, Shelby, but it's so wonderful to hear everything, so thank you.
Trustee Cross, the Model UN team did compete last year. It was all virtual, as I recall, but they did, they did compete last year.
I know, but they're traveling.
Yeah, yes, they're traveling, yes.
That's something that's good.
They traveled electronically last year.
Yeah.
Thank you for correcting.
Yeah, no.
And thank you, Shelby.
Of course.
Other questions? Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your semester.
Thank you so much.
And we'll see you next month. I guess we're not that far into this, we halfway? College lobbyist, Mr. Carter. Mr. Carter, I see him on there with the yellow bow tie and a big flag.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two anticipated events are coming in November. Certainly we'll be watching the local election outcomes. That's going to play a role all across the state of Kansas. And for the first time, we're seeing some money coming from national sources into some of these local races that have been heavily politicized. So what we're watching with anticipation, not only the trustee election, but, but just races across the state that are considered a little bit more high-profile than, than normal for some of those local seats, whether it's school board or municipalities. And then also the consensus revenue estimating group will meet in November. I talk about this a couple of times a year. The reason it's going to be interesting to watch their outcome is because the revenue picture has been upgraded each time for the past several budget cycle periods when, when that group meets. And, and I think we tend to forget about that when we look at the revenues that are coming into the state. There certainly is a surplus right now. I know that that is not projected to be the same case a couple of years down the line, but it bears mentioning simply because those numbers keep getting adjusted up. It just makes the growth that much more impressive. And that, that is what becomes then the information that legislators use for not only developing the budget, but strategies around tax policy. A special session is not likely to happen at this point. There was a group of legislators that were interested in calling a special session or at least circulating a memorandum or a petition to get signatures to send to the governor so that a special session could be called to deal with COVID-19 mandates that are coming from the federal government. That's not going to happen. Not only did they fall short significantly for the, the number of signatures needed, but in the meantime, legislative leadership developed a special committee on government overreach and the impact of COVID-19 mandates. I mention that because certainly we're watching how, how those same types of issues impact higher education, K-12 education and other government agencies. But it will be interesting to see how far the committee might stray from the topic at hand. I think when you talk about government overreach, some, some committee members will, will read into that a number of things. For example, we anticipate a government competition bill to be introduced next session. There was one this past session that did not make much traction. And the issue was really around private health and fitness clubs versus those that might be offered at a municipal recreation center. But depending on the wording could be much more far-reaching and, and in ways that could impact even, even the things that we do on campus. And so again, I'm not assuming specifically what's going on, but, but we have to be ever aware of those types of things. Property tax issues are going to be a high-profile issue this coming, this coming legislative session. As you're all aware, sitting around the table, the Walmart cases worked their way through the Court of Appeals where the court found for Walmart. The next step would be if the county chooses to ask the Kansas Supreme Court to take up the case. We're not sure what they might do, what, what that body might do. You add to that a bill that will talk about the county revenue sharing agreements that have to do with the special use sales tax. And then full implementation of Senate Bill 13 will come into play next year on the next budget cycle. We kind of had a practice round this year to kind of see how things will go. But the real, the real issue will happen next year in next year's budget cycle with regard to how we move forward with approving and adopting budgets. Last week, a group of folks connected to community colleges met with the Board of Regents staff to talk about the Promise Trailer Bill. We went through all of the items that have been assembled that, that we believe need addressed. The Board Office took notes of what those items were. And then earlier this week, I saw communication circulated that indicated that they will support the bill, which makes it sound like to me that we will be working to seek introduction for that bill rather than that being a Board of Regents initiative. Or at least the legislature will, will possibly seek introduction of that bill, possibly through the Education Committee. I think, I think that caught everyone a little off-guard. The Board indicates they will be supportive, but we'll, we'll get some better ideas on exactly how that plans to move forward. That conversation then morphed into some other issues that might be bubbling around in the, in the Board of Regents area, service areas, mergers and affiliations. Again, we hear one thing when we meet with folks, we hear another thing when we listen to other meetings that might be going on in, in other venues. And so it's, it's a little bit concerning the way we will find ourselves working with or alongside or next to, trying to pick positive words with the Board this coming session because there's some concerns about the message that, that is given to one group and then maybe what, what plays out in reality. Finally, the Government Affairs Committee met to review the legislative principles and the input that was received from, from the Board. And that, that document is currently undergoing revision and I believe will be ready for the next committee of the whole meeting for review. So, Mr. Chair, I think I would stop there and see if there's any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Dick. Questions for Mr. Carter? Dick, I have one from your report. You report on the, on the complicated property tax system and you have some numbers in there, rulings in favor of Nebraska Furniture Mart and Walmart. I just want to clarify that, at my understanding, the $38 million of a lower valuation for Nebraska Furniture Mart was the valuation, not the taxes, right?
I lifted that from a recent news article, so I, I may have interpreted that incorrectly as I was trying to assemble sort of what that impact looked like, not only regionally, but what we might anticipate statewide. So if I got that wrong, my apologies and I will seek to correct that.
I think you've got it, I think you've got it right, but I think it was, it was, it was the amount that the Board of Tax Appeals and the Court of Appeals said Nebraska Furniture Mart was overvalued, but that doesn't mean the Wyandotte County is losing 38 million in taxes or that Johnson County is losing 60 million in taxes. It's losing that amount of assessed value. Still an important number, but I don't want to, if somebody read that, I think they would be maybe more anxious than we are already. So that's the only clarification I wanted to make.
I definitely think people are anxious.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your report.
Yes, sir.
Next, we'll hear from our Faculty Association President, Dr. Jim Leicher. Welcome.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
The report I delivered in September has generated more buzz than any I've given during my 18 months in this position. I have some remarks about that, but I'll hold them until the end. First, I'd like to share the results of what I think are productive conversations over the last month, some of which I'm sure will overlap with the President's report you'll hear later. On September 29th, a few of us, trustee Cross, Dr. Bound, myself, attended the Foundation Board Meeting at OHEC. This year, Faculty Association voted to make two significant financial contributions to Some Enchanted Evening and the Meal Share Program. As I've told Rob and his staff, the decision to make Some Enchanted Evening virtual has our full support. The optics of hosting a fundraiser off-campus under conditions we're trying to avoid in our classrooms aren't what you'd call great. I had FA reps lined up to attend the event. It's disappointing it won't happen live, but the right call was made and our donations stand nonetheless. At October, on October 5th, at my invitation, Dr. Bound attended a meeting of the FA Executive Council. One colleague described it as a love fest. I wouldn't go that far, but we did arrive at some common understandings about inclusion in the strategic planning process and the importance of informal communication, which as we all know, has been hampered by the pandemic. One question that came up was what the FA's reaction would be if college vaccinations ever became mandatory. It's a reasonable concern considering what's happening with police and other unions nationwide. Since all officers were present, we shared NEA's position, which recommends required vaccination for public school educators, and affirmed that such a move would have FA backing. That being said, I've been contacted by individuals who've been advised by their providers not to take the shot. I'm no medical doctor. I don't have the credentials to judge such advice, so we trust if this scenario does develop, the usual accommodations will be provided that allow someone with rare conditions to request an exemption and avoid a tough choice between health and career. The College Council launched, launched its inaugural meeting on October 13th. This is the second of two communication bodies, ABC being the first, to improve shared governance in response to the last HLC audit. We spent most of the two hours agreeing on guiding principles. The Council is ambitiously planning to establish bylaws and a process for bringing issues forward by the end of this semester with the hope of getting down to actual business by January. It was the first meeting I've ever attended in which so many groups, faculty, staff, students, administrators, engaged in direct conversation in the same room. We welcome aboard representative there when the time is right. I followed your October 4th Committee of the Whole rather attentively, taking notes on the strategic plan so I could report details back to our general FA meeting. As you can imagine, we had considerable discussion about the sentence, "faculty take responsibility for student success." Generally, we agree with the views expressed by some trustees that the verb "take" is problematic. Personally, I don't have a deep investment either way. I guess I prefer to trust the faculty reps on the committee who asked for that wording. And you know how I feel about this. If it were up to me, I'd worry less about the verb and more about the noun and have students take responsibility for student success. Where Faculty Association would have an objection is if performance evaluations were tied to student completion rates. The fastest way to escalate grade inflation and diminish standards or encourage faculty to retreat from offering the harder classes is to let them think their jobs are on the line because not enough students pass. I fully believe Dr. McLeod and Mr. Clayton when they say that is not the language's intent. However, a different administration in the future might read that language differently. So the point I heard at Committee of the Whole is well-taken. Nobody wants implementation of this plan to be hobbled by a debate or Nobody wants implementation of this plan to be hobbled by a debate over word choices that could be better resolved here at the outset. Now, the math department. On September 24th, I met with their chair, Beth Edmonds, as well as others, to try to comprehend the complexities of revising QuickStep Plus and craft a corequisite remediation model. Beth read a statement at the FA meeting concerning Dr. Bound's visit last month in which she communicated his intent for a softened approach. I'll offer my two takeaways, the first being that math has formed two task forces to work on this, and they seem very open to multiple measures. And the second, this is my observation, that their disappointment came less from the message's content or the way it was delivered than from the proposed timeline. This is something that goes beyond math, and I've heard it frequently in public dialogue about the need for more relevant programs as a way to beef up workplace development. It's hard even for someone immersed in the nonprofit academic world to understand just how slow curriculum processes work, at least on the transfer side. In a few weeks, chairs will begin scheduling classes for Fall 2022. Before that can begin, all classes have to be approved by Ed Affairs and ultimately by Kbor, which can take up to a year. And that is assuming all the research has been done and the necessary conversations had with deans, advisory boards, instructors, in some cases, perhaps even hiring specialists, trying to reach consensus on what an effective new course or program should look like. Realistically, then, we're talking about a three-year minimum between conception and the time when new curriculum is taught to students. I was chair of Ed Affairs, so I know it's a frustration we all feel, and I'm sure we have not explored all routes to improving it. But another word for slow is deliberate. We want to get it right. The fact that we've been producing reasonably well-educated and employable people this long suggests we are. Since last month's board meeting, I've received more than two dozen messages, mostly from colleagues, but from some staff, retirees, and just folks in the community thanking me for blunt remarks that some of you took as overly negative. I point this out not to boast or be adversarial, but to illustrate the perceptual gulf that exists in different parts of the college. President Bound represents administration. They have an important perspective to share. I represent the people who teach the majority of the classes, and we do as well. Sometimes our perspectives agree, sometimes they don't. Your contract with the Faculty Association requires these reports to be delivered. It does not require me to enjoy giving them, or do you enjoy hearing them? In fact, you're not required to listen at all or even take what we say seriously. We hope you do take them seriously, not because faculty have to have their way, which has been implied, but because actually, genuinely, we want you to succeed by making wise decisions, informed by multiple perspectives, especially when they are opposition. Finally, in answer to the announcement about Angelina Lawson's resignation, I was going to say this at the December meeting, but I'll say it now. Trustee Lawson, I know you're not in the room, but I assume you're watching the video at some point, so I'll speak to the camera. I want to thank you on behalf of the Faculty Association for being a terrific advocate for the instructors at this institution. So, in helping us, you have helped students, and I believe when the final word is written, that's what will be remembered. Mr. Chair, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Questions for Dr. Leicher? Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. President Leicher, thank you for your comments. We do take you seriously. We do take your comments seriously, and thank you for your candor to this board. It helps me, it helps, I think, all of us learn what's going on here, or at least have a different perspective, and I thank you for, you know, I say this to legislatures, and it seems to work, taking the time away from your family and your normal day job to come do this and furthering and bettering the college and advocating for our students. So, thank you for everything you do for the college, and I'm sure I appreciate you being here, speaking for myself, so.
Thank you, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And, Dr. Leicher, I'm the one that made the comments that probably led to the responses, and--
I won't, I won't admit or deny that, so.
You and I have had a relationship of frank and candid conversations since we first met and sat down outside of this chamber. And I will always listen to you and take your comments seriously, and I hope you expect me to always push back if I think there is another perspective that perhaps the Faculty Association is not fully appreciating. I know your role. You're an advocate for the Faculty Association, and that is your job, and that's not an easy job, probably ever, but certainly not a lot of the times. But I certainly didn't expect you to change your tone or change your candor because of my comments in October. So, I hope we can continue that willingness to discuss, debate, disagree respectfully that we've had for a number of years.
I appreciate that, Trustee Musil. And by the way, my most trusted friends and colleagues are the people who shoot me straight. That's not to say you're necessarily a trusted friend, but I think you get the point, so.
Right. That's fair enough.
He put it out there and took--
He took it right back. Thank you, Jim. All right. The next item on our agenda is Johnson County Education Research Triangle, Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, we've not met since this past spring, but we do Monday morning, the 25th, here at 7:30 a.m. at K-State Olathe. And I can report to you that Mayor Dunn passed around the J-Cert report on September 29th, and at that report, our latest month, we were at 14.2% revenue for the month. Ended, I believe, in August. Let me check it out. But anyway, another positive indicator, as I can pretend to have some contribution here, so. It's ending September, the spreadsheet says. So, at any rate, we seem to be rallying through the pandemic, and numbers are up there in terms of the revenue J-Certs collects, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll say it for you, the J-Cert Board meets quarterly, so that when you say there's not been a meeting, it's not like they're not doing anything. They meet quarterly to review--
You know, you say quarterly, and I could be corrected, but I really think it's twice a year.
It used to be quarterly. We used to work really hard when I was on it.
Well, let me check on that and get back to you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
TBS report?
Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, our liaison and president of the organization, Trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do not have a report this evening, as we will not meet until the first weekend in December. We will be meeting in Pratt. I think I've already previously announced that. I would take a moment, though, to share that Trustee Smith Everett, Trustee Cross, and myself did attend the ACCT conference last week in San Diego, along with Dr. Bound, and we look forward to being able to share some of that information at some given time in the future. So, I don't know if Trustee Cross has anything he'd like to add to that, but it was a good conference.
Yes, thank you, Madam Trustee. I enjoyed it. I went to the diversity meeting Tuesday. Wednesday, I was at the advocacy forum, which I think I took like seven or eight years ago, but it's always good to learn how to stay in your lane. That's a common phrase in those meetings. But also, too, to just learn what we're supposed to be looking at. Nobody wants to breathe over your shoulder, Dr. Bound, or your fabulous staff here, but it's helpful for us to learn, you know, things that we should be seeing and doing, and much of which we do here. We do a great job here, and none of it really is a surprise to me, but I went to a lot of meetings to talk about, to learn about partnerships and other things as I go on in my time as trustee. Some of it's elementary in terms of what we do here, some of it is advanced and fully good idea. So, I thank the college for sending us and allowing us to learn how to be better trustees and better support you, Dr. Bound. So, thank you, Madam Trustee, for that opportunity.
The other thing I would add also is, I know, in speaking with Trustee Smith Everett and you as well, I do believe, Lee, that we discussed, you know, how fortunate we are at Johnson County Community College. And, you know, some of the topics that were brought up, I mean, we far surpassed some of the examples that were given of opportunities that are occurring in other colleges. So, we're very fortunate. There's always improvements that can be made. I mean, that's just a given. But anyway, it was a good conference. Appreciate it. I think it was just important to be together in person, which was really nice, too. So, thank you, and that does conclude my report.
Questions, Trustee Snyder? You're the only one who can ask questions.
The only one left. All right. Thank you both, and I thank both of you and Trustee Smith Everett for committing the time. San Diego sounds like a nice place to visit, but those conferences are actually working conferences and relationship-building conferences, and I know Dr. Bound attended as well for part of it, and will probably tell us something about that in his report.
Just one quick addition, if I may.
Sure.
I had two days of 21,000 steps, just walking around the convention center, and yes, they are working. There's some fun built in. I'm not going to blow past that. But, you know, yes, it's very much a working agenda, and then that's it. I'll be quiet now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Foundation report, Trustee Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Foundation's Board of Directors met on Wednesday, September 29th, at the college's Olathe Health Education Center in Olathe. Foundation Board President Marshawn Butler welcomed five new board directors. Trustee Cross provided a brief update as the foundation liaisons in my absence, and appreciated him doing that. Dr. Leicher, head of the Faculty Association, also gave an update, as did Student Senate President Shelby Winter. As Dr. Leicher alluded to, one of the main focuses of that meeting was a vote and discussion about transitioning Some Enchanted Evening to a virtual event, as the board approved. That was, as mentioned, a difficult decision, but everyone is appreciative of the foundation and the foundation board for being mindful of the overall health and safety of our students and foundation supporters, staff, and faculty, as well as just the role that Community College plays in our community as a leader on COVID issues. And the foundation is working to finalize the virtual event. Everyone will receive much more information in the coming weeks, and you can visit jccc.edu/seee, Some Enchanted Evening, for updates, and visit the same page on November 13th at 7:00 p.m. to access the live launch of the virtual event. This will not be a Zoom meeting. Anyone that's interested can just go to the college's YouTube channel, accessible off our webpage, and participate. The Foundation's Annual Lays Up for Learning 5K Run Walk was held on Sunday, December 10th, with proceeds benefiting student scholarships. The event was held entirely outside, and the weather was perfect for that, so it was a very safe event to participate in. Approximately 150 people were present at the event, which was about normal for that event, which was great to see. The event is possible because there's a large amount of volunteers there giving their time on a Sunday morning, so I thank them. In case anyone is wondering, I ran just under 28 minutes, so I was happy with that. Upcoming foundation meetings, the executive--
It's so long.
That's true. That's what my wife tells me is a natural ability. The Foundation's Executive Committee will meet on Tuesday, October 26th, at 5:00 p.m., and this meeting will include a presentation of the Foundation's Fiscal Year 21 External Audit by Auditor's Ruben Brown. And the next Foundation Quarterly Investment Committee meeting is Tuesday, November 2nd, at 4:00 p.m., and that concludes my report.
Questions for Trustee Snyder on the foundation? I'm going to comment on Some Enchanted Evening. I agree 100% with Dr. Leicher, although my first reaction was extreme disappointment that we wouldn't be able to have that in person, because I think there's a pent-up demand for people to get back together. But I completely agree that having that where masks would become optional immediately upon the first sip, it would not, the optics would not match what our principles are on campus. So, I congratulate the board on making that decision. All right. If there's nothing else, then we'll move on to the committee reports and recommendations. The Committee of the Whole report tonight will be given by our secretary, Trustee Ingram. That has been rotating between our vice chair and then our treasurer, and now to our secretary, Trustee Ingram. You have the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee of the Whole minutes are found on pages 1 through 9 in the board packet. We did meet on Monday, October 4th via Zoom. Dr. Bound and all of the trustees were participating in that meeting. Initially, the strategic plan was proposed, presented and proposed strategic plan for 2021, 2025. Strategic plan was given to the Board of Trustees. The board was able to ask questions and provide feedback concerning the proposed values, goals, strategies, and metrics. Complete details can be found subsequently in the president's recommendations for action portion of the October 21st board packet. The second order of business was regarding legislative principles. JCCC's statement of principles were reviewed by the Committee for Use during the Fiscal Year 2022 legislative session. The purpose of this document is to provide overarching guidance to college leadership on legislative issues and proposals. Trustees were asked to submit edits in writing to Dr. Bound and Kate Allen with the goal of having a final document to review at the November Committee of the Whole meeting. Rachel Learz, Associate Vice President, Financial Services, CFO, presented the budget calendar for the Fiscal Year 2022, '23. At the November 29th, 2021 Committee of the Whole meeting, the committee will review proposed budget guidelines for Fiscal Year '23 and how they impact the college's five-year financial projection model. Recommendation for approval of the Fiscal Year '23 budget guidelines will be brought to the board at the December 16th, 2021 meeting. Janelle Vogler, Associate Vice President, Business Services, presented information regarding the need for expedited approvals for certain procurement recommendations. A brief review of processes and an explanation of when recommendations may need accelerated approval was presented. Due to the Committee of the Whole meeting time constraints, recommendations were not presented. Trustees were encouraged to review and ask questions before the October 21st, 2021 Board of Trustees meeting this evening, during which time action will be taken. Mr. Chair, we do have five recommendations that I'm now prepared to present, if you're ready.
Sure.
Okay. The first recommendation is for additional network infrastructure upgrades to support classrooms and offices in hybrid or remote configurations, as well as off-site disaster recovery, such as the following: VMware host-server upgrades, wireless access point upgrades, wireless controller upgrade, Wichita State disaster recovery site equipment, and additional network switches. It is the recommendation of the whole, the Committee of the Whole, that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification to Sirius Computer Solutions for additional network infrastructure upgrades for an estimated expenditure of $678,938.77, and I will make that motion.
Second.
And moved in second to approve this, is there any discussion? Dr. Bound?
Maybe just, because there were some questions that came up. One was related to how funding would be, how we would pay for it. So, it's a combination of the maintenance-of-effort funds through Kbor, CARES III funding, as well as general fund, and that the equipment at the disaster recovery center at Wichita State is new equipment, and everything else here on campus is a replacement.
If not, all those in favor of the motion to accept the recommendation to approve single-source justification to Sirius Computer Solutions for additional network infrastructure upgrades for an estimated expenditure of $678,938.77, please say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Motion carries unanimously. And I might point out, as the board members know, well, maybe Kelsey can tell me, do we need four votes on everything to adopt it? We have a quorum, but the majority of the quorum can't act. I think we need four votes, so we have a specific issue or question we'll need to walk through it.
I didn't mean to make you nervous.
No, that's all right. I'm just thinking, it's unusual to only have four of us here. Trustee Ingram.
Okay. Our second recommendation this evening is for an annual contract for prime vendor for food and food supplies. The original term was based here in four renewal option years, and this is a one-year contract extension. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve a one-year contract extension to Cisco Food Services of Kansas City for annual prime vendor food and food supplies for the estimated amount of $300,000 through October 23rd, 2022, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion?
I'll just add comments as well to this one, because there was a question about, are we experiencing supply chain issues? The answer is yes, we are experiencing supply chain issues, and part of the reason why we're extending this as opposed to going out to bid is because of the supply chain issues and knowing what the market's facing today, so.
I noted we did have cran grape and apple juice at the front of the room, so keep those supply chains coming. All those in favor of the one-year extension for Cisco Food Services as the annual prime vendor for food and food supplies, please say aye.
Aye.
Those no? That carries four zero. Those no? That carries 4-0.
Okay. Our third recommendation is for new walkability sidewalks. The purpose of the request for bid, RFB, is for new walkability sidewalks on the JCC main campus. The Johnson County Community College Walkability Sidewalks 2021 project will involve the construction of new five-foot-wide sidewalks, ADA ramps, crosswalk, striping, excuse me. Grading and associated ancillary works is needed to complete the construction of the new sidewalks. It is the recommendation of the committee of the whole that the board of trustees accepts the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid with alternates from McConnell and Associates for new walkability sidewalks in the amount of $168,970, with an additional 10% contingency of $16,897, to allow for possible unforeseen cost for a total estimated expenditure of $185,867, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. I'm going to make you speak anyway, Dr. Bown. Is this, this is listed as a 2021 project. Is it anticipated that this construction would be done in the remainder of the calendar year? I don't know if Tom's here.
Tom is on the line.
Sounds like this is actually a 2022 construction, probably?
This actually will, if we can get it in this fall, we will. Otherwise, it'll be in the spring of the year. We do have McConnell and Associates doing some additional work for us on campus, so they're already mobilized, and hopefully we can get some of these sidewalks in yet this year.
I don't know where these are located, but are these on places that will disrupt the movement of students around campus?
No, it's on the north side of campus and on the east side of campus, basically connecting the college to the sidewalks along the street, Quavera, and also college. But it's mostly on the north side of campus, and so it gives us more pedestrian access to the campus.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Trustee Snyder?
Dr. Bown or Tom, either one, if you can just send us a map of where those are going to be. I'm fully supportive. I think walkability is a big issue for the college, so I'm glad to see us do it. I'm sure this is just the start of things we could do.
I have a map that I can send you.
Perfect. Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion to approve the low bid with alternates from McConnell and Associates for new walkability sidewalks, please say aye.
Aye.
Those no?
No. Wait, walkable sidewalk. I thought they were talkable sidewalks. Yes.
You vote in favor of walkable sidewalk?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, trustee Cross. That passes 4-0. Terry's back there taking this down. And Tom just wondered how we're going to do that.
Walkable sidewalks, yes. It's suburbia.
Moving on.
Are you ready?
Yes.
The fourth recommendation this evening is for the purpose of the request for bid for a Zoom-enhanced classroom audiovisual equipment. It is the recommendation of the committee of the whole that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bids from Adorama Conference Technologies, Inc., Ford Audio, and Troxel Communications for the various audiovisual equipment needed for the Zoom-enhanced classroom projects for a total estimated expenditure of $379,079.90, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the recommendation. I'd note that each of those bids was a low bid for the item within the bid package. There are no questions. All those in favor of accepting the low bids from Adorama Conference Technologies, Inc., Ford Audio, and Troxel Communications, please say aye.
Yes.
Those no? That motion carries 4-0.
Okay. The fifth and final recommendation from committee of the whole this evening. The purpose of this RFP is to establish a contract for a scheduling and integrated workplace management system. The system will allow JCCC to manage a growing need for event management while also supporting the need for enhanced facility management to manage the operation and utilization of campus facilities more efficiently. It is the goal of this procurement to obtain a scheduling and IWMS that is seamlessly integrated to allow effective efficiencies in a single system. The initial term of the contract will be from October 22nd, 2021, through October 21st, 2022, and is renewable for four additional years in one-year increments upon the approval of both parties. Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of the committee of the whole that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from Accruent LLC for a scheduling and IWMS for a base year of $186,373.88, and a total estimated expenditure of $567,828.81, including the renewal options through 2026, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Been moved. I realize I have not been doing my job. Moved by trustee Ingram and seconded by trustee Snyder. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion to approve the proposal from Accruent LLC, please say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you, Nancy, for taking that, laboring oar on that. I'm going to make a quick report. It's not on the agenda, but we did have a collegial steering meeting, and it didn't get listed on the board reports, or I guess it's usually under the committee reports. In any event, we had a collegiate steering committee that is made up of the president and vice president of the Faculty Association, the chair and the vice chair of the board of trustees, Dr. Bown, and Dr. McLeod and Dr. Weber. And we had a meeting on October 7th. We really did a kind of introductory meeting and got to know some trivial facts about each other. I'm not going to mention any names, but we have some athletes on this committee that range from an eight-man football star to a Division II college football star and a four-year, I'm not sure what division that school was in, well, Missouri State track champion. We had several folks who appeared to be the first college graduates in their families. We have examples of many of us that had some struggles during college and helped to inform how they address students here on this campus. We have some coaches. We have somebody who is now driving a Kawasaki 900, and we hope he is driving it safely. Somebody worked at Coca-Cola Bottling Plant to get through college. And as I mentioned earlier, we have people that had 18 in their graduating class. So what I was talking to Tanner about is Augusta, Kansas is a big city compared to where about four of us went to school where we had less than 50 in our graduating class. We have somebody that studied abroad in both Paris and Florence and did not take us with them. And that's kind of the general idea that we have a lot of commonality when you start talking to people about what their journey is that brought them to here. We have two more meetings this year, and then next January, a new board chair and a new vice chair will determine whether the collegial steering committee continues and how it continues. But our goal at the next meeting is to have each of us bring in some ideas about how did COVID change us, good or bad, from a higher education perspective and maybe a broader cultural perspective. So that's our goal for that. We're ready for president's recommendations for actions. A treasurer's report, trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for tolerating my antics. The treasurer's report is included in the board packet and is for the month ended August 31st, 2021. Some items of note include, at page 1, is the general post-secondary technical education fund summary. August was the second month of the college's 2021, 2022 fiscal year. An ad valorem tax distribution of 6.1 million was received from Johnson County in September and will be included in next month's report. The college's general fund unencumbered cash balance was $116 million as of August 31st, 2021, and expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. And if I could ask, Mr. Chair, the president, like, why do we have so much money sitting around? Are we just letting money sit around in accounts? 116 million?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the--
Why do we have so much money in an account? 116 million?
It's reserves amount.
It's a reserves account.
Right. So we have that on hand in case we need it, and it pays general expenses at the college, right?
That's correct.
It gets out in campaigns. I'm in the middle of a campaign, if you didn't know. So just silly things are said, and like, we just said that we just sit on money, and it's like, no, we don't sit on money. We actively use it.
And as for the taxpayers, those listening today, you'll know also that we are, we'll be utilizing some of our reserve dollars to, well, we'll be using reserve dollars to fund the construction project between this year and next year.
Right. Thank you for that clarification. Therefore, Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of this administration that the board of trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month ended August of 2021, subject to some audit.
There's--
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the treasurer's report for the month ended August 31st, 2021, subject to audit. Further questions or discussion? Trustee Ingram.
I would just bring up one comment in addition in response to you as well regarding that, that we do have policies regarding those.
Right.
You know, so I just think it's really important that people understand it's not just sitting money. I mean, we have policies around these things, too.
And to build on that, it's how we cash flow the year, right? The largest amount of our revenue comes in, in the two allotments from the ad valorem taxes, and so we use that to pay our expenses until the next distribution comes. So it isn't that we sit so the people, the public hear this. It's not that we sit on that money. We utilize it to pay our bills because our two largest revenue streams cover, our largest revenue comes in these two allotments, so.
And I would direct anybody that wants to do it to get on the board packet at page 20, which shows the graph of reserves for this fiscal year and the previous fiscal years, and we are basically coming off our high because we get ad valorem taxes and we get tuition payments in August. Our balance will go down to about $55 million by the end of the calendar year. It will then go back up in January with tuition and an ad valorem expenditure. And if I remember right, the budget that we adopted for this fiscal year 2022 is anticipated spending $23 million out of reserves primarily on the capital improvement program for the science labs. So I appreciate the question, trustee Cross, and I think we can explain why it is a prudent amount.
Yes, sir. I don't need to be injecting anything into it other than to help explain that this money is actively used and used for the betterment of the college pursuant to our policy. So I thank you for that, and I apologize.
Did we vote?
Yes.
We did. We did not vote.
We did not vote.
All those in favor of approving the treasurer's report, subject to audit, please signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Those no? It's not that late in the day, Terry. Did I give you, did you get a motion in a second?
I did.
I apologize.
You had four of them.
All right. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the strategic plan that Dr. Bown will present. I'm going to introduce it just by saying it's been a long process. We only have four trustees here today, but the other three trustees were heavily involved in this. They've had opportunities to comment as they go along. And although we'd rather have more people here than not, simply because of circumstances, we aren't, and we're going to go ahead and proceed with this. And I guess I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Bown.
Absolutely. Well, again, Chair, trustees, thank you so much for allowing us to present the strategic plan for your consideration. As you've just stated, we've spent the year working through, really, just roughly a year working through the plan to get it to this point. And so it's my privilege to turn it over to Dr. John Clayton to walk us through the plan for your consideration tonight.
I appreciate the doctor comment, but I'm not doctor. I'm just mister.
Oh, that's right.
I don't have that doctor.
We're setting expectations.
Yep, yep. So tonight, I do want to review the mission, vision, values, goals, strategies, and metrics that are coming before the board for consideration for adoption. They can be found starting on page 22 of your board packet. In the presentation of the committee on the whole, on October 4th, we went into some significant detail around the strategy development. Details such as the creation of a DEI office, or faculty accepting responsibility for student learning, or enhancing employee training and development through strengthening our onboarding processes. Those are all meant to help the board understand the thought process behind each one of those strategies. There was great discussion, great feedback that was provided by the board members, and your insights, along with the campus and the community feedback, has all been provided to the appropriate strategy teams to be used in developing of the strategy and action plans that's going to help us implement the strategic plan. Based on the feedback from the campus community and with an 87% support of the campus, it is recommended that the mission of the JCCC remain the same, and that mission is JCCC inspires learning to transform lives and strengthen communities. With 84% of support from the campus community, it's proposed that the vision of the college read that JCCC will be an innovative leader in equitable student access, learning, and success. While support of new values range from 83% to 91%, the college proposes to update its values to the following six values. First, student-centered. We promote an environment that shows the deepest care and support for learning and growth of our students. Teaching and learning. We believe lifelong learning is central to enriching the lives of our students, faculty, staff, and community for success in a global society. Third is community engagement. We value our role as the community's college and commit ourselves to partnerships that respond to the changing needs of those we serve. Fourth is innovation. We foster an environment of excellence by intentionally seeking new and creative ways to meet the needs of our students, colleagues, and community. Then we have belonging. We value diversity, equity, and inclusion, creating a collaborative and respectful environment where all are connected to our mission. And lastly, we hold ourselves accountable for our decisions and actions. Using the college's environmental scan and SWOT analysis, or interpret that, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, the Strategic Planning Council recommended four goals for the college's next strategic plan. The first one was student success, which is support learners in achieving their educational goals. The next one's community partnerships, or advanced diverse and strategic partnerships. The third goal was diversity, equity, and inclusion, and this is to build an inclusive and equitable campus culture. And the fourth one is employee engagement, which is strengthening our employees' engagement. Included with each goal are the strategies and metrics that guide implementation and measurements of success respectively. On page 26 of that board packet, you'll find a supplemental timetable of when these new metrics are expected to be available and tracked through the strategic plan. The strategies and metrics are as follows. Student success. The first strategy is ensuring our models of teaching and learning lead to student success. Strategy number two is successful transition students to JCCC. And the third one is creating effective systems and pathways for students. The student success goal will be measured by using four metrics. First, course success. That includes the credit course success rate and non-credit course success rate. Second one is retention rate, and that includes credit fall to spring and credit fall-to-fall retention and non-credit retention. The third one is success rates, and that includes credit first-time full-time degree-seeking success. I want to remind you that we're looking at the 150% of this, and success is graduation and/or transfer to a four-year institution. We're also going to be looking at credit first-time part-time degree-seeking success. Same criteria there. It's 150%, or for part-time students, that means six years. And then we're also going to be looking at non-credit completions. And then we're also going to be looking at post-graduation, and this is going to be the percent of career technical graduates that are employed in a related field. Next is the community partnerships. The first strategy there is identifying a line with those who advance JCC's mission, vision, and values. Second strategy is promoting the college as a partner of choice for strategic collaborations. And the third is be a convener for issues that transform and strengthen our communities. The community partnership goal will be measured by using two metrics. First one is partnership assessment. We're going to look at two things here, and that's the number of partnerships that the college has, and then we're going to develop a metric that's around satisfaction with partnerships. That's going to include both the satisfaction of the partners and of JCC with that relationship. The second one is going to be community satisfaction, and the college is going to create an overall community satisfaction, an important survey to be conducted in the community. to be conducted in the community. The third goal is diversity, equity, and inclusion. It also has three strategies. Strategy one is cultivate and communicate institutional access, awareness, and accountability. Strategy two is develop and support an inclusive environment that empowers all students, faculty, and staff to succeed. And strategy three is implement, reinforce, and sustain institutional structures, practices, processes, and partnerships consistent with diversity, equity, and inclusion principles. The diversity, equity, and inclusion goal will be measured by using two metrics. First will be a belonging score, and that will consist of two scores. One is for students. We're going to use the Noel Levitt Student Satisfaction Survey, specifically question one that asks, most students feel a sense of belonging here. And then for employees, we're going to identify a survey tool that will ask about their sense of belonging at JCCC. The second metric is going to be a creation of a college scorecard or dashboard. This will include monitoring the development and implementation of a scorecard or dashboard specifically focused around DEI metrics. The fourth and final goal has three strategies as well. Strategy one is encourage employee growth. Strategy two is create and maintain where employees are valued and belong. And the third one is, the third strategy is develop a consistent culture of accountability, integrity, and equity. The employee engagement goal will be measured using two metrics. First one is employee engagement. And the college is going to identify and implement a commercial tool to measure employee engagement. And the second one is around professional development. And the college will track the percent of employees who participate in at least one professional development opportunity each year. It's been my pleasure tonight to present the 2021-2025 strategic plan, and it is the recommendation of the College Administration Strategic Planning Council that the Board of Trustees adopt the strategic plan 2021-2025 as is shown in the board packet, including the mission, vision, and value statements, and the goals, strategies, and metrics. With that?
John, I'm going to ask a couple of questions here because I think I know the answers. But when did we start this process?
It was just a little over a year ago.
And how many different people have been surveyed by some electronic tool?
The number of people actually surveyed has been over the thousands. We've had probably roughly right at 1,100, 1,200 responses.
And then how many people would have participated in some of the live exercises that you held?
Several hundred, at least, have participated. This has been a very inclusive process. Both faculty, staff, students, community, foundation board members have all been involved in the development of this.
Thank you. Questions for John? Lee?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. President, John, for this. I think this is good, and it's different than what we've been doing, certainly, right? I mean, not to ask an elementary question, but yes, I'm asking it. So it's different than what we've been doing. In terms of the exact metrics, and I think accountability standard, I don't remember doing that in years past.
Correct. That's an addition this time around, is including the metrics as part of the actual strategic plan adoption.
Right.
We've had metrics in the past and tracked metrics in the past, but that was not part of the adoption of the plan.
And I want to commend the staff and administration for coming up with this because I certainly think it's an outside-the-box idea, or maybe just industry standard now, I don't know. But I thank you for putting this in here so that we have some meaningful way. I assume you'll cook up those numbers, too. But that's a joke. Thank you for that. But, you know, we'll have some way to be able to measure where we're going with this and how we're progressing, right? That's the goal here.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, I thank you, and I thank you for taking the joke.
Trustee Snyder?
John, thank you for all the work on here. And I think Dr. John fits you, if you want to go with the music, you know?
Thank you, Dr. Snyder.
Doctor.
At the Committee of the Whole, I noted the absence of sustainability in the strategic plan. I'm just curious what the administration's thoughts are and how we're going to proceed with that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I think we've got options ahead of us. My recommendation would be that we consider the development of a policy around sustainability that would allow us to reaffirm the work that we've been doing as a college around sustainability. It lays out a commitment for the long term, that we're about sustainability, realizing that strategic plans come and go every so many years where policies are expected to endure. And so I would ask for a couple, three months for us to work through a process of developing that. And I think that's an alternative that would allow us to move forward as a college with our intent to maintain and grow efforts around sustainability.
That makes sense to me. I can accept that.
Trustee Ingram?
I wanted to say thank you as well. I appreciate all of that you indicated, and I appreciate you bringing up sustainability, too, because I think that is an important discussion that we continue to have wherever that fits. You know, it's not mine to say, but I would support a policy or work toward a policy that would include that because I do think that is for the future. And, you know, it's not our future that we're talking about here. It's our children. It's our grandchildren. And this is how they're being raised. This is what they, they're teaching us. They're teaching me what I need to be doing when it comes to sustainability. So I appreciate the consideration of that.
Mr. Chair, one quick.
Trustee Cross?
Yeah, and I think I've talked to Dr. Bound and Chair Musial about this. I think it fits under equity in terms of, you know, we're not supposed to be using all of our resources now. We need to preserve them. Like, you know, my kids are going to need trees, too, so maybe we have some laying around. And I'm fine with that, Mr. President. I think that's good. And in my mind, it fits under equity. I just thought I caught that balloon. It's a trial balloon, but thank you.
Trustees, I'm going to go to trustee Smith-Evert, who has joined us by Zoom. I apologize, Laura. I didn't know you were there until Dr. Bound just told me. So comments on the strategic plan or questions for John?
Thank you. I have been watching via the public feed and wanted to log on for this part. My main question is, I want to know when the metrics would be reevaluated. So how often are we expecting to have some of those metrics come back to be able to kind of go the next step? In other words, I think there are some metrics that are really very introductory or beginner, and that's fine because that's the stage where we are. But I don't want that to be our end goal. Like, oh, we met this baby step and therefore, yay, we're DEI. You know, we've covered all those bases. I want to know how often we'll be able to bring those back and really up what we are measuring and how we are making sure that we're making incremental progress.
Absolutely. And that will be a minimum on an annual basis. Those will all be looked at. A lot of it depends on the cycle of what the metrics are updated, so that varies from metric to metric. We did lay out an informational timetable there for you for those metrics that are new. Some of them are going to take a little bit of time to develop, or acquire the right tool to use to begin measuring it. And by the time you get all that, the process to purchase those and get those in place, it'll take a little bit of time. But we will be reviewing the metrics. I know in cabinet frequently, and before the trustees, there'll be updates on a very regular basis. At minimum, each of the metrics will be looked at once a year.
Okay. So at that time, we'll have the opportunity to, like, if the Board of Trustees wants a more aggressive or, you know, detailed metric, I think some of these, my own personal feeling are, they're fairly broad. And that's okay for where we are right now, but that's not where I think we should end up, especially after attending a national conference and kind of seeing where we are between some of our peer institutions. And we will have that opportunity at that annual review to offer our own feedback or prerogative on things maybe we think we need to amp up or move forward on.
I would assume so, yes.
Thank you.
I think I would also add to that, though, that what I wouldn't want is if, well, let me first start with the positive side of it. Our metric should tell us, are we making the sort of progress we're expecting to make? And that we need to make in order to live out our mission, vision, and values, and to accomplish those strategies and goals over time. And so those should be well-founded. And yet, at the same time, I wouldn't want us to be changing metrics because they're difficult. And so you set metrics to measure how you're doing, and targets to give you something to shoot for, and to strive for, and to attain the level of excellence that we're seeking as a college. So there's always that balance, right? And so we want to find the right ones. I bet we'll find some of these. To your point, trustee Smith-Evert, that some of these are, they will evolve into something that is an even finer measurement of accomplishing the goals that we've laid out before us. So there's a balance in that. But what I want to be really clear about is, we're not going to change metrics because it's hard. We're going to change metrics when the metrics aren't measuring what we need to do to know if we're making the kind of progress we need. Is that fair?
Thank you for that. I should have stipulated. I kind of expect some of these we will achieve quite quickly. And so if we've achieved them, I don't want us to say, well, look, we're done. We did that. When, in fact, we know that that was the first step, and we achieved that first step, but we need to keep getting better and keep working. So I completely agree. Thank you for clarifying that, Dr. Bound.
And I think, Dr. Bound, you've indicated that, assuming we continue a Committee of the Whole format, that you will be bringing back measurements or progress on various goals throughout the year.
Yes. Our intent would be, starting at the November 29th, I think it is, Committee of the Whole, that we would come to you with the first two goals in terms of what progress have we made? Because there's still plenty of work towards implementation after the first, you know, with the first of the year. But what progress are we making in getting those well-established? And then, again, as we move through this, a couple times each year, well, a couple times for each goal during each year, you will get an update on that goal that includes progress to plan and those metrics that are applicable for that point in time.
Trustee Snyder?
Not to cut off any conversation. And Mr. Clayton read the recommendation, but I'll restate it. I move the adoption of the five-year strategic plan as shown in the board packet, including the mission, vision, and value statements, and the goals, strategies, and metrics.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Ingram, I know you have some more discussion that I cut you off on. I apologize.
That's quite all right. Because I was really kind of piggybacking on trustee Smith-Evert's comment. That was really my question, as far as the accountability. But I was struggling and looking through my paperwork. I really like the working agenda that we use. We used to use them for every committee that we had. We use them for the Committee of the Whole. And I think, you know, maybe developing some sort of a format like that, if that seems to work, if that's workable, that would keep us on track. You probably have already thought of that, but I just wanted to reiterate that I think something like that is extremely helpful and allows us to anticipate when we're going to see something. And you can change it. Certainly, it's not written in stone, but I think something like that, that's concrete, that we can see, might be helpful for consideration.
Go ahead, Dr. I would say, to the comment of the Committee of the Whole, if we were to not move forward with the Committee of the Whole, that we would have another way of bringing, we would bring these to you either in committee form or in the president's report at the Board of Trustees, or some combination thereof.
Anything else, Nancy? Lee?
I concur, and I just want to ask trustee Ingram a question. I think it helps, it's helped me understand what we're doing, I think. Is that partly what you're asking for, like in the working agenda? The working agenda is sort of a guidepost for us to see and understand what we're supposed to see and watch. I don't want to be in the weeds. It's just a window into the weeds.
Sure.
To be able to understand our role better. And I thank the chair, the trustee for answering.
One comment I would make is that the Overland Park Chamber and the Greater Kansas City Home Builders just did a community scan of 2,500 people. Included in that were questions on education, including higher education, including Johnson County Community College. I don't know if you've been in touch with Tracy Osmond Olchen, but I'm sure that within the background of those questions and the open-ended comments, there's probably some good information about how people feel like we're doing now, and may give us an early baseline. I do know that it was as good as the one that was done in 2011 or '12 when we were described as more popular than Santa Claus. I think that, I think the fact that we are that seen as that popular and strong in the community is both a blessing and a curse, because it makes it harder to make those marginal increases. I think in any strategic plan, and this is a five-year plan, we're talking about dramatic changes in higher education, both because of COVID and other pressures, demographic pressures on the number of people graduating from high school, technology. So these things are going to be hard to measure, and that's why I'm not a longitudinal researcher, because I don't have the patience to work. But I think it's very important that we have the patience to set these metrics and then see how they work over a couple of years. And it's going to be frustrating for the board to do that, I think. I want to commend the board on its patience. We had a very robust discussion on October 4th. A lot of us had ideas about how to wordsmith some or all of this report. And words matter. But we respected the process, and that's always difficult for the board to do, is to not impose our own thoughts or prayers or whatever on a process. And so I want to thank everybody that did this. John, for your leadership. Dr. Bound, this was one of your priorities that you talked about when we interviewed you in February of 2020? Yes?
Yes.
So thank you for doing that.
March.
We think we hired him in March. I think we, maybe we interviewed him in March.
Bet money?
Yeah.
Yeah, I bet it was early March.
Okay. I stand corrected. I'm going to start over.
There was an interview, there was an interview on February, too.
I'm joking.
I know. But it was one of your priorities. It was one of the board's priorities. Now that we have it, we have to do it. So if there are any other questions, I will add. Laura, do you have any other questions?
I always do, but I'm going to table them for this purpose. I'm going to say what I said to Dr. Bound. There are some of these that I think are really, really soft goals. And I think it is important that this Board of Trustees throw their full support around goals that can make the most influence for students. And I think there are some of those that we can do a lot better on, and I intend to bring that up when we review them. So that's the extent of my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. We would expect nothing less. And we know you'll be here. We look forward to seeing you in person next time. All right. With that, all in favor of the motion to approve the strategic plan, the mission, vision, values, strategies, and goals, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? That passes 5-0. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Monthly report to the board. Dr. Bound?
All right. Well, let me first of all start by saying thank you to you as trustees, and thank you to the faculty, staff, and students, and community members who engage with us throughout this year-long strategic planning process. The easy work is done. The hard work lies ahead of us. And so I am anxious to see us get to work on this because at the end of the day, it's about how we serve our students and about how we serve our community with excellence, to be the college that they expect and deserve. And so I thank you for approving the plan as presented tonight. I'd also like to take a moment to thank trustee Lawson for your support, trustee Lawson of student success, and for being encourager of DEI efforts across our campus. And so thank you for your service to Johnson County Community College and the community. All right. With that, let's get going on my report. So, all right, here we go. You met Tanner a few minutes ago. We did the strategic plan. I'd like to start out by talking about, and bringing you up to speed on, exercise is medicine. And I'd like to say thanks to Tina Polley-Mallory and Lenora Cook for leading a college-wide effort that is part of a national effort that encourages student wellness through exercise and caring for themselves. There have been a month-long There have been a month-long, or there is a month-long set of activities during the month of October that includes everything from a Dean's Walk, and I appreciate the Deans taking the lead and modeling for our students, and getting out and walking with our students. Things like yoga classes and open weight room, and there's a, there's been several hip-hop fitness classes, meditation, and, and one that I'm going to have to find out more about, and that's college recess, because I didn't know we had such a thing. An abs and core class, well, I'm just going to move past that one. And, and as well as, it's been referenced already in the Foundation Report, Lace Up for Learning. And then the last piece is our mascot challenge. And so we are actually competing for national recognition with this work. I believe we are one of 300 institutions of higher education who have submitted entries into it, and I believe we have a video to show you that is part of the mascot challenge. Roll, let's roll it.
Well done.
Anyways, I'd like to thank our team across the college and our students for engaging in this. It's, it's a way to have a little fun and, and demonstrate our commitment to keeping each other as healthy as we can. So, all right, back at, back at the report. So, let's talk enrollment. So we are, as of earlier this week, about 6% ahead of where we were last year. And so, you know, as we project out to the end of term and where we think we'll be, we've watched our position flatten out. And so, in, in working with Dr. Weber and Mr. Clayton and others, you know, we think we're going to be just short of flat for this fall semester. When I look at how we are doing in this semester, this fall semester, to date, our part-time students, we're up 10% there. And I realize, much of that increase comes from our concurrent enrollment. And so with full-time students, we're down about 2.5%. Male students, we're up 9%. Female students, we're up 3.7%. When you look at, you know, their, their pathway, we're about 2% up in associate degree students, about, just short of 6% up in certificates, students who are pursuing a certificate program, and about 13%. Again, if you're going to look at the non-degree-seeking, we're going to look heavily at concurrent enrollment. So that number in particular is one that, while it's encouraging, I also don't want us to get overly excited about that, other than the fact that it is a positive direction. In addition to that, we continue to look at our continuing ad enrollment. We're tracking nicely. We're at 138% of where we were at this point in time last year, and 86% of total enrollment for fall semester last year. Now, where do we track against 2019? While the trend line looks very similar, it certainly has reduced compared to that, to 2019. We're about 65% of where we were at this point in time, and about 48% of end of term. So we're, we're headed in the right direction from an enrollment standpoint, but we clearly have work to do as a college. So I'll pause there for a second. All right, I'm going to keep moving then. Let's take a look at, quickly at some of our metrics. And I'm going to stay at high level today, and for you as trustees, I put at each of your places, the data slides, out of the next few slides that I'll do there. Our plan is, if time permits, that we would spend more detailed time in the, drilling down into these numbers at our November Committee of the Whole. And I'll be able to confirm whether that's the plan or not in my weekly update to you this weekend. We have, we have disaggregated the data as we have, as we did in February, and, but I'm going to stay, I'll provide some quick summary on each of, kind of that, as we disaggregate, but I'm going to stay at kind of the overall total numbers for the most part. So, with that, all right, let's jump in, and let's take a look at enrollment, credit headcount enrollment. This is looking at last year. It's looking at the last three years. We're looking at annualized enrollment. We know that there's been a downward trend for quite a few years now. If I look at comparing the last two years and disaggregate this data, if we look at, at least some of the student populations, if we look at our white or Caucasian students, we're down about 11%. 2000, academic year 21, compared to 20. Actually, I'm looking at these over the two-year period, the two-year changes. So from 2019 to academic year 2021, we saw 11% slide there. African-American students, down somewhat less, at just under 10%. If we look at our Hispanic students, we are up about 1% during that time period, although I will say that that is a student population that went up last year and came down a little bit. But when you look at a two-year trend, we're up over where we were two years ago. And if we look at students that identify with two or more races, we are up over that two-year period about 16%. So we're, we're seeing pockets where we're growing. If we look at, when we look at it by gender, then we see that we're down about 4% in that two-year period of female students, and about 15% in male students. So I'm going to take a look real quick at continuing that over those, over those years. We're at, just short of 23,000 in 1819, about midway through 1805 in 2920, and about 13,8 this past year. To date, we're at about 6,600 students, three to four months into the year. So if, if I look at total students served, the, there was a calculation error in this, and it's actually higher when you combine the two. But I want us to begin to look at enrollment as the total number of students that we've served, as opposed to just credit students when we look at our, at our headcount. We're at about, last year, we were at about 39,000 students all combined that we served. I walked you through this at high level. We will walk through it in more detail in the future. But I want to take a look at fall-to-fall retention. We did this, by the scale of his chart, it makes it look a bit more exaggerated than what it is. But there was about a 3% drop between academic year 19 and academic year 20. And then comparing that to this past where we are now, compared, we're up about a percentage point. When, when we look at disaggregating the data here, African-American students over that period had about a 4% decline in fall-to-fall retention over that two-year comparison, looking at the three years, start to finish. Our American Indian and Alaskan students saw probably the most significant decline in retention, about 14%. Our Hispanic students were down about 4%, although flat over the last year. And our white students saw a decline of about 2.5%. Again, we're seeing that with students that identify with two or more races, a 1% gain. So we are, we're seeing some improvements here. We're seeing some drops in other areas, heavily influenced by the pandemic, for sure. One of the gaps, though, that we did see close in fall-to-fall retention, was the male/female student gap. Had improved over that period. All right, going to move through to fall-to-spring retention. These are numbers that we looked at in February, right? So these aren't new numbers. It's the same thing that we reported to you back in February, but I wanted to keep it here in our review of metrics. Overall, we saw about a 1% drop in fall-to-spring retention. Balance that, though, with, we saw over the last year, about a 1% gain in fall-to-fall retention. So keep in mind, you'll have some students that'll come in the fall that won't come back in the spring, and then they're back again the following fall. And so, again, when we look at fall-to-spring retention, this is a metric that during the year tells us, how are we doing at retaining students from one term to the next? And I'm going to roll through these quickly, and then take a look at credentials awarded as the last, and this is looking at the last three years. This is a metric that most definitely has been influenced by COVID, as we've seen a decline in persistence from term to term, as we've seen fewer students overall. This is where it begins to pile up. And, and what I want to be careful, though, is, is we can't say, well, just because enrollment is down, completion should be down. Because we've seen over the last several years, pre-COVID, we actually saw, with declining enrollment, we still saw increasing number of students earning credentials. And so anyways, it, I bring this to your attention. When you look at the, the total number of, of credentials awarded to graduates by academic year, we've got about 3,700 in academic year 19, about 33, almost 3,400 in 2020, and then it dropped to just about 29, just a little over 2,900, 2,940 for the academic, this past academic year. This is where we've seen the most significant impact of COVID. So that's a, a quick roll-through of the numbers. We will spend more time walking through those in detail, but I'm happy to stop and answer any questions, and I'm sure that my friend John will help me out if I get stumped.
So I just want to point out, because we have in our, what you handed us, the slides were all the aggregated data.
That's correct.
And you've given us, and you say disaggregated, broken down by groups of students.
That's correct.
Is in what we have, have in front of us.
Yes. You do as trustees, yes.
I'm going to ask a quick question. On the fall-to-fall retention, even in 2019, it was 55%. But we lose 2,000 or 3,000 graduates every spring, so they're not going to probably come back the next fall.
Graduates are factored out.
Okay, okay, so that's.
They're fall-downs. Fall-to-fall.
Yeah.
Remember the protocol here.
Thank you.
John Clayton, the Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness.
Hey, John.
Fall-to-fall retention is actually looking at that first-time, full-time, degree-seeking student. So it's going to be those first-time in college, they haven't had any prior college experience yet. Now, dual-credit are counted in that, so if they have had dual-credit in high school and they come to college for, for us for the first time, so it's first time after high school, college experience. So graduates would have been on the, would not be counted in that fall-to-fall retention. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I get that. How much, I'm worried, I don't know how to figure out these numbers because of COVID. And, you know, this fall semester of 2019 was the last time when COVID didn't affect our.
That's correct.
Ending enrollment and our, our awards, because we had a lot of people drop during the spring of 2020. So is there, should we, I mean, I know we should be concerned, because we've been concerned about enrollment for a while, and the demographics aren't great. How much should we take out of this? And then maybe you get into that in the Committee of the Whole, but it's, it's just hard to, for me to understand, what, what does this mean, given what we've been through as a society?
Join the crowd. It's, it's very difficult to really determine. The only thing that we can do right now is really look at what the national trends are doing. And really, for the national trends, we're maintaining our own. And so, you know, we're, you know, when it says we're down, we're down less than what the national trend is, as a whole. And so that's, that's really about the only thing we can do to try to put some sense around this at this point in time. We're going to have for the next several years, a little asterisk on every report redo. Don't forget that, you know, fall 2020 was a, was a strange anomaly.
And as we get these reports, will we, will we compare it to a national baseline of some sort?
Where it's available, we try to include that, yes.
So, so for instance, especially as we think about the metrics, right, that we just set, we're, we're looking at national benchmarks when we set kind of the targets for those. So where we say 75th percentile, well, that will actually equate to a certain retention rate that we'll measure against, but we're using that, kind of that 75th percentile as, as a target to measure against moving forward.
First, first goal is to do better against ourselves.
Yep.
Yes.
Aspirational goal is to do better against whatever the national average is.
Correct.
Trustee Cross?
Yeah, I thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for that question, Greg. I thought it was appropriate, because it's hard to make sense of what's going on here.
Yeah.
And just, from my perspective, like, I don't, at this point, I mean, I like criticizing and assigning blame when it's due, but when it's not due, I don't. And so I think, just so the President knows, and Mr. Clayton, you know, I don't think you all are responsible for this. While I may ask tough questions about why isn't enrollment up, I don't want to abdicate that responsibility, but I don't think you all are blamed for this. I just, just from our perspective, trying to make sense of it, as we're questioning the community, like, why isn't enrollment up? And I was like, well, God tapped me on the head last night, and I'm in charge of enrollment at Johnson County Community College. Thank you. But, no, I'm not. Like, so it's hard to know what to, how to address this, as I'm sure you all struggle with it. But I just want to make that clear. Like, I don't, at this, like, maybe in a year from now or five years, if we're still down, it's your fault. But, you know, right now, it's, I don't think it's your fault. I just want to say that.
Trustee Snyder.
Thank you for the, for the data. Kind of Greg's question, to some degree, Lee's, kind of got into this. But what is the optimistic-leaning takeaway from this, or is there one?
So, you know me, I'm fairly optimistic, but I'm also a pragmatist, and we got work to do. So, you know, where, where do I see glimmers of hope in this, recognition of teams' really good work? When I look at graduation rates over time, this college has improved graduation and transfer rates. Transfer rate is probably the one metric that we shine in nationally. Our students start here, and they're eager to get to our four-year partners. And so we've, we've done a really good job. And I look to our faculty and staff and say, thank you. Thank you for the work that you've done, and continue to, to drive graduation rates. There's a lot that goes into that, student success rates. And so I see, I see we've got opportunity to build on that. I see that the fact that our enrollment is off, I don't get excited about that. I know you don't get excited about that. I know that it's something that, that weighs heavy on us, and that, again, I think enrollment isn't about enrollment for the sake of enrollment. It's about how do we look at things from a completion, from a student success standpoint, and then how does enrollment allow that to happen? So if you think, if, if we want to increase the number of students who are graduating, we've got to make sure that we're doing everything we can from a retention and progression standpoint to help them be successful. standpoint to help them be successful. You do a better job of retaining students, your enrollment's going to go up. You do a better job of helping student success, the word's going to be out across the community. That's the place you got to go, because students that go and start there, they get great jobs, and they transfer really well to our four-year partners, that's going to start to fill the, the front end of the pipeline, and you get this momentum. So, to me, that's where the optimism is in all this, is one, we were less bad off than some of our partners around the country. And so, we've seen some gains from enrollment standpoint. And I think the strategic plan sets us up for the opportunities to really drive student success and get really intentional about the work that we do together as a college community.
Thank you. And I guess, along those lines, when, when should we expect to have a deeper dive into a review of enrollment growth strategies and kind of what our plan is?
Yep. I think as the year progresses, and as we really gear up, and I look to Dr. Weber on this one, I, the Strategic Enrollment Team, Planning Team, is back at it, and really looking at, how do we build those strategies? And how do we make sure they're empowered to do the work? Because you don't just grow enrollment on the front end of the cycle. It takes everything that I mentioned in order to get there, to make sure that we have the right mix of course offerings. And, not only in terms of the courses themselves, but the delivery of the courses, and, and when they're offered and so forth, to meet, you know, student demand. And all that factors into a really good strategic enrollment plan. So, I don't know, Dr. Weber, if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I can, real quickly. Randy Weber, Executive Vice President, Student Success and Strategy. The only thing I'd add to that is, yeah, typically, what will happen, a strategic enrollment plan follows the college's strategic plan as a whole. So, we can say, what is it we're trying to accomplish? Most enrollment professionals will tell you, enrollment's a byproduct. It's a byproduct of meeting the needs of your students and community. It's also a byproduct of how you're doing what you're doing. So, you can see in our strategic plan, we've put a lot of emphasis into student success. So, if we do those things well, our current students should be more successful. What you don't see in the plan so much, but is a high priority of the institution, is increased efforts for access. So, what you'll see some of the Strategic Enrollment Team doing is taking some of the heavier lift on some of our access initiatives to ensure that, that access strategies are in place. And so, therefore, if those access strategies and the success strategies identified in the plan are moving along as they should be, we should, as an institution, see enrollment taking a better uptick. The other unfortunate reality is, what will give us an enrollment uptick is if the economy crashes. If there are fewer jobs and people are looking for skills training, they will dart back to college. The reason we're seeing such low trends in enrollment in community colleges across the country is because there are jobs for people who want them. And we all know, right now, our current economy, that's even, even more so. So, Johnson County residents, who often come to a community college to increase their lot in life, there are jobs right now that are begging for them to come, to come work. And, and so, we're seeing that lesson. It's also part of why you're seeing increases in continuing education. Those students often want quicker skills training, or their employers will, will, will train them on higher-level skills. Those tend to come through our college in continuing ed.
Is it, Mr. Chair, if I may, is it just that simple, Mr. Weber, Dr. Weber, that because there's jobs open, that people are simply gravitating toward them, right? As we have this great resignation and economic phenomenon, right, of people resigning jobs, leaving jobs, staying away from jobs, whatever, people that would gravitate toward us, particularly in an economic downturn, are simply just floating to those open jobs?
By and large, yeah. Most people will attend a community college if they want a better lot in life. And so, a better job is the way to do that. Not everybody, but most. And right now, that avenue doesn't require community college education as, in the same ways it does in the different economies. But, but we're still doing these efforts to combat it. If we, if we take our current students and improve our student success efforts, those students will stick around longer. If we work with the state to strengthen the power of transfer and graduation, our students will stick around longer. So, so we can improve our retention rates with the students we have, and we'll see our enrollment increase in ways that we would hope.
Did you finish your question, Paul?
Yes, thank you.
Nancy?
Thank you.
I guess the only question, this is going to sound really out of the box for Nancy Ingram. But when it comes to hearing about things, I, one of the things that I, I heard recently was about businesses offering free tuition.
Yeah.
Is that something that you have been approached by any local businesses to cooperate and collaborate with free tuition at all?
That's a great question. So, so, a couple of years ago, we worked on an innovative partnership with UPS, because they have a traditional tuition reimbursement program for their employees. But what we found is, it's hard for the students to come up with the money upfront. So, we worked with UPS as a regional corporate office to do a tuition deferment process. And that was, put risk on us and risk on them, so their students could take more credit hours in a semester, in hopes that they would, they would work there longer, and they would, they would persist to a degree faster here. Now, what we're seeing is what you're referencing, more corporations taking similar efforts to retain their employees. And personally, having a son who went through a very similar program at Starbucks, it retains employees. And so, we are working and watching closely. Actually, Alyssa Waldman, our VP for Continuing Ed, is helping us look at some of those efforts that we can do, because there is kind of a conduit to develop those partnerships. But we're trying to get more. So, we're seeing the Amazons and Walmarts and others of the world who are large employers in our service area, taking these. And so, we do believe attending their local community college will be their education choice of interest.
Thank you.
I think that's all, Randy. Dr. Brown, is that complete your report?
Not quite yet. We're getting close. We're getting really close. All right. All right. And the, the last piece of my report tonight, as we approach November, that is Nat, Native American Heritage Month. And I just wanted to draw your attention to some of the activities on campus. One, got an early start on it, and that was last week, last Wednesday evening, where we celebrated the installation of a spirit totem installation exhibition. The artist was Doug, is Doug Coffin. The donors are Ron and Phyllis Nolan. And we celebrated the dedication with an invocation from Dr. Daniel R. Wildcat, who's a Uchi member of the Muskogee Nation of Oklahoma. He's also a faculty member and administrator at Haskell Indian National University. It was a tremendous evening to celebrate. And frankly, the location of the exhibit is just really fantastic. I mean, the building offsets it and really gives it scale. So, all right. In addition, when, when we talk to folks on campus, the, some of our faculty, Andrea Vo has, in her classes, has a student trivia contest. Will focus on Native American history and culture. She'll also weave into that. Veterans Day, facts and information, as well as connections to study abroad. On the 16th, the Kansas Studies Institute, a program by Ty Edwards and John Nichols, entitled Wine Dot in Kansas. The Past is a prologue to Redlining. And then, on the 18th, at the Nerman Museum of Contemporary Art, we have an artist talk with Rhonda Holy Bear. It will be the artist in that discussion. And so, with that, trustees, listening public, that concludes my report.
Thank you. I want to go back. Trustee Smith Everett, I didn't look for your hand up with respect to the enrollment information, so I apologize. Anything you had questions about or wanted to comment on? Sorry, just a minute ago.
She may have had to stop, she had a 7:00 appointment that she needed to take. She'll be back on at 7:50.
Okay, okay, great. All right. I have no new business to report and no old business. That brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes a number of routine and consensus items typically considered collectively and approved in a single motion and vote. Any member of the board may request that any item be removed from the consent agenda and considered and debated and voted upon separately. Are there any items in tonight's consent agenda that any trustee would like to pull? If not, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ingram and seconded by trustee Cross. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those no, that passes four to zero. That leads us to an executive session tonight. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for consultation with legal counsel regarding a pending personnel matter, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last for one hour, beginning at 7:10 PM and ending at 8:10 PM, at which time, open session will resume at this location, both physically and for our Zoom followers. We'd like to invite Dr. Andy Bown and Kelsey Nizar to join this executive session. Do I hear such a motion?
A move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Snyder. All those in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Those no, that motion carries. We will be in executive session at 7:10 PM and return here at 8:10 PM. Thank you all. We are back from our executive session. It's about 8:10 PM. Nothing, no action was taken during the executive session. We have nothing else on the agenda, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Moved by trustee Snyder, seconded by trustee Ingram. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those no, that passes four to zero. We are adjourned. Thank you.